We'll call this public session to order and would everyone join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda? Hold on, I'm trying to make my grid so I can see everyone. Okay. No? All right, then we'll move on to public comments.
So we do have folks in the attendees window. If you do have a public comment, if you want to just raise your hand through the that feature, we can address you. Just each first name, last name, and counter residence, please. I don't have anything.
Okay. Alrighty. Well, maybe after the second round. Okay, so we're on to the superintendent's report.
All right, great. Well, today I was able to go on a bus ride to deliver some lunches and breakfasts around the region because we have a short week here at the school district. We doubled up our lunches and breakfast numbers and kind of gave them all at one time and one day. So those buses, it took about 45 minutes longer to load the buses this morning and then a little bit longer to deliver them, but it was really actually very fun to go around and to do something that I think was meaningful to a lot of people, was able to talk to some parents who were, who met me at, you know, if they didn't have their little freezers or their little plastic bins out there or whatever, whatever boxes and so forth they have to put the food in, they would come and meet me and we'd have, you know, say a few words. And actually, most said thank you for the snow day. So that was, that was big from last week and it's nice to see that, you know, parents were appreciative of that. And I, and the pictures that we had, that Nick was able to post on the Facebook site, certainly in, you know, we had some nice events take place. Kids were making forts, having some time with their families. I'm sure, you know, there were a lot of memories that were made during that timeframe. It was a beautiful day, certainly. The learning environment choice, we're going to try that again. Last time we did that, we ended up going remote and it didn't work out, but we sent that survey out again or that form out again for people to reply and respond to. They have till about the fifth. That gives us enough time, January 5th, to be able to make all the changes that we need to. So far, it's about 75, 25, the percentage of individuals who want to come from remote back into in person or are hybrid, and then certainly 25% who want to do the reverse. So you, most of you anyway, if not all, were at the last education committee and saw a presentation from the middle high school administration and some, maybe a teacher or two. And we will have more conversation about this and I'm sure there will be more questions that will need to be asked and more information that will need to be provided. The education committee needs to, you know, talk and see if they want to push forward the information to the full board for discussion and an action on the area of adding a course. That would have to do with career exploration and then also changing some of the graduation requirements for the incoming freshmen next year. We talked about long-range strategic planning, that arrow that I don't think, well, I can't see it on here, but if you scroll up, you can see that arrow. That's something that we've had for a bit of time. We want all of our arrows, the different schools and everything moving in the same direction, but you can see that we've really, last week marks the three-year mark of our strategic design and the implementation of that. And so it's, it's fitting that now that we've done that for a few years, we're tightening up our plans. And so I believe that we'll have that by, by middle, well, middle spring, we'll be talking about it. And then certainly having it for the late spring and summer so that we can continue to move on very intentionally, purposefully. It was nice to see in our presentations with the, from the ed committee that a lot of the work that we put into the strategic design three years ago actually was, is within the standards and the guidance of the NIASC accreditation group, that they had changed up their work. They actually spent some time not, you know, doing their accreditation so that they could redo all of their guidance. So it's neat to see that we're right on track with, with what they want. So we need, but we need to continue to move and to capitalize on some of the work that we've done to move forward for the betterment of our kids and for our community. And that's the report for today.
All right. Any questions for Ruben or comments? Nick?
Hi Ruben, did you want to show that video from John real quick?
Oh, yeah, if you have it up and ready. I didn't know if you had it ready. Earlier today, John, I went to Ringe Memorial School, but it was, it happened so fast, I didn't get to see the actual action. I went there when all the trees were down. And so this is just to show the parent, the adjacent lot to the parking lot at Ringe Memorial School, where we're looking to do some expansion of the parking lot. So I think we have a few minutes here that you can watch.
Yeah, I'll just play like a-
Perhaps not the entire thing, yeah.
10 minutes, no?
10, for the next 10 minutes, maybe, maybe 40 seconds.
Yeah, and John was there and giving me this video. He had talked about like, he was amazed at how efficient they were. Like it sounded like the work was going to also, you know, leave tomorrow, but he said that most of it's already done with the exception of some trees, I guess closer to the building.
Wow.
It's like watching something out of Jurassic Park.
Dr. Seuss.
That's a terrific shear and grabber, huh?
Yeah.
It's, it's too bad, I don't know, students weren't around to see it?
Well, yeah, super fast. I mean, I think this, I think it was done in half a day.
It was being delivered at 10:30 this morning. So if it's done, then yeah.
Yeah, it was, well, it was done by 1:00, I'll tell you that much.
Took it at about 1:00, 1:30, I think he said.
So Laurel, sometimes it's not so good when students are there to see. When my first year teaching there, I had taken my students outside of the classroom and we each adopted a tree out there and we would go visit it on a regular basis. And then in the spring, they cut them down and the kids were in class watching all of their trees, adopted trees we cut down and they were in tears. So eh, sometimes yes, sometimes no. Anyway, okay, now on to the consent agenda. Thanks very much for that, the superintendent's report. So I need a motion on the consent agenda. Second, thank you Charlie, thank you Patty. And roll call vote, Laurel?
Aye.
Thank you. And John?
Aye.
Thank you Heidi?
Aye.
Thank you Patty?
Aye.
Thank you Charlie? Thank you. And I say aye, so it passes 6-0-0. Thank you all. Moving on to the discussion. So we had heard a while ago about, you know, from, from Heather and from David about, you know, precautions and how we were going to set up and we had adopted that. And we've also then heard, well, I heard from one person, I think we all heard from one person. But Charlie, you had said you'd heard from a few people that had approached you? Talking about that?
Yes.
So we said that we would kind of revisit and talk about why the numbers were what they were. And why we had configured the way we did.
I guess my question would be that, how is it going? And we supposedly have 50 seats allotted based on the measurements provided in the Wiltshire Sports Co. virtual handbook. And I'm just wondering whether they're all being used. And if not, if there are any plans to somehow make sure that people who want to attend, attend. That's just basically my question.
Right. Everyone hear that okay?
Yeah, it sounds like Charlie, you're asking if, if all of those seats are being used. But I am under the impression that games don't actually start until January, so I don't think we have the answer to how it's going. So we've only started practice just last week.
So I can give a, I can give a brief update as to what I've been able to see. Almost every day I go in and take a look at how the practices are going. Sometimes I see the girls practice for a few minutes here and then talk to the coaches and then I see the boys practice as well. It looks like people are taking well to the mask requirements. Early on, you know, there had to be some adjusting, but I, today anyway, for instance, I was in there and looked to be that people were doing very well. And so that's great. David Springfield, Heather Lindstad, I know has been working with their coaches to make certain that that's a priority. The spaces, yeah, we haven't had any games yet. They aren't slated to occur, I don't believe, until January, maybe even mid-January. And so we don't know exactly whether we have spaces left over. We do have rationale for, you know, why we're having a minimal number of people, minimal. I mean, honestly, it was more than what I originally wanted. I was looking at something like Wilton, where Wilton didn't have, and their school board made it policy, and it does impact us as well, that they're to play with no spectators. So there are groups like that. We're, we're realizing that it is important for our learners to, one, play first and foremost. That's what we wanted to do, make sure that was safe. And that's the most important thing. And then of course, yes, just like we had a snow day to make memories with family, family is important. And so we wanted to make certain that there was some opportunity for that to take place. For both the players, you know, in all sports, not just basketball, but specifically to the Pratt, we, it would be basketball and also cheer. And then, you know, making certain that we're not overcrowded and, and that we have the, the necessary spacing that we have. But, you know, Heather and David, I can see are in attendance tonight. And so maybe if we have some questions for them, you know, if, if it was okay with the board chair, you know, that they'd be able to answer some of those questions.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So let's. I'm wondering, Charlie, if we want to pose your question as a what if, rather than how is it going?
Yeah.
So if we have-
Because the-
Go ahead.
Parents that had contacted me were concerned about girls' basketball, they're concerned about boys' basketball, they were concerned about parents and grandparents who would be able to see them, obviously would be the only time they get to see them, telling them they're going to be graduated. So I guess what I want to do is get an update relative to if we're not using the seats, how should we use them? And if we haven't played games yet, I apologize because I thought we had to. Is for Heather and Dave to give us an update after they've had some games and see if there's any changes to their plans. Again, when I first brought this up, I said that it was not an ambition to make any changes. I just want to know, are we using the seats available? And if not, what plan do we have to do then? And then one other thing, I said, between now and mid-January, all kinds of things could change. So it's probably more beneficial to everybody, but we have a better, another discussion after we play some games with folks who are doing a lot of weather scenarios.
So do, do we know the capacity, you say 50? Is that what it is?
Yes, it's within the handle, yes.
Okay.
Heather and Dave can be right now and they can speak to that.
Okay, Heather?
Yes, hi, thank you. Um, we measured out the, the Pratt. The only option that we have or we would like to have is that parents or spectators can only use one side of the bleachers because obviously the other side of the bleachers will be all set up for just the team. So the visiting team would have their section of bleachers, our student athletes and coaches would have theirs. Keep in mind that if our JV players want to stay and sit behind our team's bench, so that would strictly be student athletes, our students that have been using the gym. But obviously the visiting team, their JV players, because they all come on the same bus, they would have to be in their bleachers too. So there's no openings on that side where the, where the teams would be. On the other side of the bleachers, when we measured it out, two people represent each student. We could do that and by measuring, we can only fit 29 people in the bleachers based on distancing and whatnot, but there's 29. And then we can use the stage. We, same thing with distancing, we could get about 15 and/or we could go deeper a little bit. However, we also have to account that the cheerleaders will be there and that they each would be able to have at least one representative, one fan for themselves or spectator, parents, whomever. So that's kind of how we've done it where, and you have to realize that the JV teams will be in there before and then having them leave, if they leave. But some of their students are flexed so that they would be staying anyways because they do go onto the bench for the varsity. So that's kind of where we came up with 50. But you have to remember again, like, you know, we've got to put the cheerleaders in there as well and have distancing for them.
Right, so the cheerleaders are on the stage, you say?
We were going to put them kind of in the corners, but their parents would be up on the stage too. Like I said, we can only get-
Okay.
If you do it, we could get 15 seats or chairs unless we go another row on the stage, although the stage has got stuff for, for drama. So we can only go so far, so deep on the stage as well.
Ruben?
Heather, has there been any thought or discussion about having the games be at the Ringe Memorial School instead of the Conan High School due to the fact that the seating capacity might be larger?
We have not ventured over there to do it, but I don't think I, we could do the same thing. And I think the seating will probably end up being about the same. And the bleachers are hard. I know when we pull them out and it seems feasible, but in truth, you can only use the top with the six to eight feet distancing. You can only use the tops and the bottoms, which, so the same bleacher setup is exactly the same at Ringe, that, you know, the setup. That we might be able to get a few extras, but I don't, I don't know about that.
And you probably wouldn't have the stage at Ringe?
Correct.
So probably equal out the same?
Right.
Okay.
I think, I think we also would like to know that the way we are going to seat this in so that we know who is coming into the building and it makes it a little easier. It's based on, and I get what parents are saying, but we're trying to limit it so that we know exactly who sitting where, too. If we said that there was extra seats and then, you know, some, someone decides that they have two friends, we don't know where those friends are coming from and those kind of things. So when you say that you're opening up more seating, who are you opening those seats up for? And we're trying to make sure that it's kind of the same cohort in inviting parents or, or people that actually live with our student athletes too. We want to make sure that it's minimized.
Right, okay. Heidi, you had a hand up?
No, I was just wondering how many athletes are on each of the teams and how many cheerleaders there are.
So our varsity teams right now have, we'll base it on that, we have 12 on the men's tee, on the boys' team. And I believe it's the same for the girls. We have 11 cheerleaders.
You have JV as well. So you have, yeah, you basically, basically you have about 10 varsity boys, 10 varsity boys on varsity and then 10 JV boys and then about 10 varsity girls and then about eight JV girls. So that's basically the makeup. And then the 10 to, 10 to 12 cheerleaders.
Yeah, Ruben, and then Patty, did you have your hand up too? Okay, so Ruben then Patty.
So this question, Dave, so when, and this is what I'm asking because I think this is how it is. But so the JV team plays, they usually play first.
Yeah.
And those, let's say, all their parents or, you know, a parent and a sibling or something like that, the two people that they're allotted come and for that game. So once that game is done, if those players aren't playing in the varsity game, am I correct in saying that those spectators need to leave the facility?
No, I would, I would say that they wouldn't have, I mean, basically, the way we looked at it was, obviously kids that are double suiting, their parents stay. If, if a JV parent or parents want to stay for the varsity game and all of the varsity parent, players have their parents there, we felt it was just easier keeping track of everything to just only, you know, not open it up, like Heather said, not open it up and just start letting random people in.
You, you have to understand, otherwise we would have to clear the building. We don't have it, there's not an hour between JV and the varsity game. It's usually just pretty, pretty quick turnaround. So if you wanted to, the JV parents want to leave, but we can't determine when they're going to leave. So otherwise, we would have to clear the building and have people re-enter. And you wouldn't be able to start to bring in your varsity because you wouldn't know who-
I mean, we've had numerous AD meetings and it, the most I've ever heard is just the two varsity or no fans at all at the game on either side. No one talked about clearing the gym and then bringing in, you know, just trying to keep it as simple as possible. That's, and controllable. So we know, like Heather said, we know exactly who's coming in the gym because we have to have names, we have to have everything there for contact tracing. So we know, you know, and just, and our main concern was if the, if the parents can watch their, number one is can the kids play? Yes, they can play. Number two is can their parents view them in the game? That's a bonus. They can. And then everything else after that, right now, it would, we just feel it would be too chaotic to just open it up after that.
So Patty, you're next and then Nick.
No, I, I just want to say that I appreciate the concentrated effort that's gone into this. And there may be a case where it is where it is, you know, I mean, we're doing the very best we can with what we've got and this is what it is. And we don't have a lot of room to do anything else. It's unfortunate. But I agree with Heather and David that you need to, it has to be manageable or else it can't be done.
Or it won't be done at all. Right?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Nick?
Yeah, I think, I think at least what helped me in the description was when I went with Heather and David and they were talking to me in the gym, it was described to me as like, you would have like, you know, your seats pre-established, you know, marked off and then each seat would essentially be assigned to like an athlete. So, you know, regardless of whether they're JV or varsity, you know, they would take up that area and that would allow us to, you know, better, if there was ever a need to contact trace or something to that effect. It would, you know, you'd have a clear expectation of specifically where people were assigned to sit, whether they decide for JV and varsity, just one game or whatever.
Then you'd have to sanitize, if people left, you'd have to sanitize that area, you know, it just, it gets very, it doesn't sound like a lot, but it becomes a lot. Real quick.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, Heidi?
Yeah, so you may have some varsity parents that can't get there until the varsity game starts. But, so you're saying essentially JV game will start, you have potential that, let's say, all of the parents from JV and varsity are, you know, the two parents for each player are able to be there. That's about 20 players. And so they may all come at the beginning of the start of the JV game or you might have some varsity parents show up for just the varsity game and go to their assigned seats. And, but no other, I mean, and if a JV parent wanted to leave, but you're not going to reuse that seat where a JV parent has just left from. They may leave, but that's it, we're not going to-
That's it.
Because it's not-
That's it. They leave.
Okay.
We don't know who, we'd have to know ahead of time who is coming in to that and it just, it, I can just see it being very, very confusing.
So, I have a question. It's a what if, what if one parent came and let's say a sibling that lives in that household wanted to come instead of the second parent? And sit, I, I'm wondering-
We're, we're going to run this like, like a, like a, if you were entering a college campus game where the day before, the day before, the students are going to be able to say to their coach with a checklist or a signup sheet, this is who's coming to my game. And, and maybe it swaps, right? Your one, your sister doesn't come, but your brother. So they're going to tell us who their two spectators are.
People, right.
Be it a parent or a sibling. And so that would be on their guest list, let's put it that way. So when they walk up, the person checking at the door, they're going to say, I am so-and-so, I'm here for, you know, number 12.
Yep.
I'm number 12's family. Then our person at the door has to, again, is going to do the screening, go through all the, the questions and check them off and let them in. And then they're going to be there. So it's going to be on like a pass list so that we can control it, we would know. It also, you know, they're going to go to their seats, they're always going to know where their assigned seats are so that there shouldn't be a lot of crossover of where people are going. Again, it's the same thing. And if we put the JV people, parents up on the stage, if they do want to leave, really that just allows for a little bit more room for our cheerleaders slash that area to, to keep everything controlled. But it is going to be on a pass list and we should know the day before because that's kind of what we're doing about all clubs and everything. We'd like to know the day before who's coming. If the parents are coming, when they are bringing a child, it would be great if we already knew that they signed in on the pup sheet and that they were attending the school and we could check that in the afternoon to make things efficient. So we are trying to know who's coming and, and be able to check those kind of things for the COVID screening as well.
And then you're going to have, you're going to have report, like you're going to have Ben Conit who wants to come for the newspaper to take pictures and, you know, do a write-up of the game. So, you know, he'll be obviously screened and masked and he doesn't really, he just kind of has a general area of space. But so there's, you throw him in the mix and then I don't know what to do, you know. If, if a keen Sentinel reporter wants to come to the game hypothetically, where do we draw the line? Do we say no reporters? Do we, you know, what do we, you know, is there a line that we draw or we just look at areas of safety, you know? So that's another thing we have to look at.
Right. Right. Okay. All right, Patty?
I just, so I really like what you, so Heather, what you said was, it has to be someone who's domiciled, it has to be someone who's housed with the student athlete, right? You're stressing, because we want to keep people in their pods and not have a lot of community transmission between different communities.
That is our goal.
Heidi?
And just wondering about what we're doing for streaming, has that been figured out so that other people can watch? I know that was in the, in the framework that there was, that was the plan.
It's in the pro, in progress, right now, we, we're working, I'm obviously working with Nick, Heather, Mike Cotton, and just trying to figure out the most efficient way, the most, you know, for everyone. Because obviously, we just can't keep, you know, spend $4,000, $8,000 on, you know, cameras and things like that. So we're trying to find the most efficient way to, to do this. You know, so it's in, it's in works right now, we're, we're still working on it.
Okay, but at least that would hopefully provide others the ability to view the game.
Yes.
Thank you. Ruben?
Yeah, just to summarize with more specificity, they've found quotes for, you know, a, a group that will come in, put the, install everything, and you have to sign for like four years, and it's, you know, several thou, like $8,000, whatever like that, but then they take it back. There's local groups that will come in here and do the filming, and there's a price daily, you know, for that sort of event, so we've looked at that. We made a contact earlier this afternoon to someone who has done some installation of equipment in our Pratt auditorium, and he's going to be giving me quotes about how much it would cost to stream if they were to do it, and also how much it would cost if we wanted to own the equipment that would, you know, we'd be able to control ourselves consistently in the gymnasium. So if we want to do something like that long-term. And then there are, you know, other solutions that involve, you know, iPads and things like that, you know, not quite as good quality perhaps, and, but, you know, there, there are options out there. So there's, trying to find the best one that's going to be, that's going to work, be consistent, give a good, kind of a good product is key, but not obviously break the bank.
Right, so does Pratt have like a projection room like Ringe does?
No.
Okay. Heidi?
I'm just thinking if it could be something, if we did do something that was equipment we owned, I could see this being something really positive for a student to get involved in, a student who might be interested in that type of thing, so.
Well, yeah, I mean, eventually, if, if we have the money, there's broadcasting. There, there's a lot of educational pieces that could be put, put into it that would, I think would be very beneficial, educational for the kids, career-wise. So it is a possibility, it's just, everything costs money, and, you know, is it, is it worth the investment for one year? Is this a long-term thing? Those are some questions, you know.
All right. Okay, John?
Just wondering if there's any chance that, you know, a media department at Franklin Pierce or even Keane State might have students, you know, who, who are working in, in this field to, could help us out. It, it's, it does sound like a big deal, right? I mean, especially when you have so many other things to figure out, but it would be pretty cool for the community.
John, I think those are great, I'm going to reach out to Franklin Pierce tomorrow, and because I know that their season, they're going to do scrimmages, their season was, the N-10 was canceled, so they will have games, so that's really good. I'm going to reach out to them tomorrow to see, because I know I've been a guest on it when they've done games, a color commentator. So I think they need, they need things to do, so that, that's a great idea. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions or comments from anyone? All right, great. All right, thanks very much for that, and I guess, you know, once it's actually happening, we should probably check in and hear again how it is actually working. Alrighty. Next up, action items. We have the budget finalization and warrant articles.
So the budget finalization, I mean, I, I think we just clicked on the warrant articles, because the warrant article should have the first number, there we go. So this reflects the the conversation that we had the, on the Saturday session.
Sorry, just looking at Charlie.
Removing the 800,000 from the original draft one. There was another, I think, when we left that meeting, there was another 80,000 to 90,000 that we needed to find. Carrie and I sat down a couple of times through the week and did, kind of took it from a variety of areas, probably about 15,000 or 20,000 in the area of supplies, and, and also some from, you know, other, other sources. Carrie needed to work more closely with Jen to actually find the special ed savings. I wasn't going to just pick a line and start taking things out, because we wanted to make sure that we are doing it in a way that is going to make it easier for them, or as easy as possible for them to manage the budget lines next year. But that's been taken care of, and that's the number that we settled on. There was also, as part of that motion, and that there would be a, providing the community back $200,000 from the fund that has the money for purchasing, land purchase or, or property purchase. That does not have to be part of one of these articles. Matter of fact, it's, basically, you have the ability just to vote and make that happen. In a sense, on Sunday, on Saturday, you did do that already, but if you wanted to take a more clear vote, just to make sure that, you know, that's in the, in writing and everything, that's perfectly okay, as long as we have it in writing that that vote took place, we're in good order. And then the other articles, if you scroll down, were just the ones we talked about, which was, well, there's one that we didn't talk about, but the Articles Four and Five were the ones we, we spoke about. And then Article Three is, we don't have to have this on there. It's just, as Gordon reminded us as we were having a conversation with him, Gordon Graham, that districts can, if approved by the voters, retain up to 5%, not the, not the 2% or the 2.5% that we've been doing. That it would allow you to have more flexibility. I'm still trying to get more information about the usage of that. It would seem as though we're talking about an easier process of utilizing that 5% and not having it just for emergency purposes like roofs, if they were to, you know, collapse or something like that. I'm, I have not received the answer I'm looking for, which is to give me clarity that that is indeed the case. But people are not telling me that it's not the case. So that's just something that if a district wants to be able to utilize the 5%, it was put into law here in New Hampshire that as long as the community voted to allow that to happen, we could do that if we desired, or the board could do that if it desired down the road.
Okay.
So, Ruben?
Yes.
That's similar to what already exists for cities and towns. Cities and towns have the ability to accumulate a fund from year to year of up to 5%. And the school district did not have that, school districts had to return everything to taxpayers. So what this does is it gives the school district the same ability as cities and towns do, as cities and towns have. The good thing about it is that I believe that all it takes to spend from a, from a fund is a public donor.
That seems to be the case. I was just, as I was reading through it, I was just a little, I guess, it, it just seems like it gives you a lot of leeway compared to what we currently have.
That, that is correct.
Yeah.
I think it's a, it's a good move, because it, from my perspective, anyway, it will help us make the budgeting even tighter, because we don't, we we don't have to worry as much about having a, another meeting, legislative body meeting to handle any budget overrun. If we have a 5% buffer, we can tighten up the budget, and I think that's a good thing.
Yeah, it's really, if, if it's the, what, what you're saying and what I was believing it to be, it's really very similar to what we, what we manufacture with the like special ed contingency fund, for instance, but this is a broader contingency fund from year to year. Is that a good way of, is that a good way of explaining it?
I think that's a very good way of explaining it.
Yeah.
So, other questions, discussion on the warrant articles here? Yes, Laurel?
So, I will say, I did see that the general fund was reduced, a total of $800,000 from the first draft. But there are some other changes that have been made to revenues and expenditures anticipated in other funds that increase the net appropriation. So I think that what we had hoped for was that we would see 550,000 drop to the, a decrease in the net appropriation. Right, that would be 800,000, less 450, then plus the 200,000 for the return of land, fund. So what we've seen is an increase in the budget for food service of $85,898 from when we last met. A federal dollar revenue decrease for food of $10,525, and a food sales revenue decrease of $75,363. So that's a difference of 100, an impact of $171,786 from what we went through during our Saturday marathon. And I guess I'd like more information on what's driving this, and do we have to consider a rate increase for school lunch and breakfast?
Yeah, we may very well have to consider, or at least we should consider anyway, a rate increase, whether we want to do that or not, it should be considered.
And then, when you also factor in the increase of $45,000 in our budget, carried in our budget to reimburse the food service, you know, it's a $216,000 impact to our budget over what we budgeted last year. For our food service.
Yeah, John?
Can somebody describe what's driving that?
Well, you know, Carrie described the food service that the company indicated that they were planning for a, a number that was very different than this time, mainly because they felt they needed to be able to pay more to have people working in the food program. That was the primary reason that they provided to us. I can text Carrie and see if she could join us for this to answer a few of these questions. So I'll just take a few minutes to do that, she said she'd be available.
So, and that was the explanation given for going from 15,000 planned reimbursement to 60,000, which is carried in our operating budget, right? But these other swings, I think we need to better understand, and if we plan on an increase in food lunch, does that mean we can count on increased revenue?
Right, or about the same, just fewer people taking lunch?
Well, increased revenue from what's being presented in our revised revenues and appropriations. And Ruben, is it that we don't need a warrant article? I understand that we don't need one, but can we have one?
Oh, I don't, I don't know the, well, I wasn't the one to talk to the attorney on this one. I believe the concept was, at, at the very least, the board had the authority to just give it back. And what's the purpose of having the warrant article if that can take place?
Right. It's about, it's about perception and advertising what we're doing in a way that is impactful to taxpayers.
Well, I think we talked about putting that, at least in the voter guide, as to other steps that were taken. But I'm not certain that you couldn't have a warrant article, but I'll, again, I'm, I'm texting Carrie, this is if she can join me.
The, the ideal way to handle it would be if we could put it in the return to taxpayers line on the revenues and appropriations. Because then it's.
I know that she's been looking into that and is waiting for a response from DRA. They're, right now, she doesn't see how that can take place, but understands the desire for that.
Patty?
It will still have an impact, obviously, but not different from a warrant article.
You're sure it would de, it would decrease the net appropriation?
Yeah.
Which would be a good thing? Because, I mean, right now, for our operating budget, even accommodating for the in and out of the CBA impacts, you know, it's an 8%, over 8% increase over fiscal year 20 actual. So it's just a lot to ask for.
Patty? I have Patty frozen.
Well, my, sorry, I'm having internet problems.
There, nope.
Who knew?
Yeah, that's all right.
Um, so on the food service, I just find it really awkward that one year we would be charging nothing for everybody, and the next year we would be increasing the prices. And I get it's a pandemic, and I don't really understand how it all works, but it seems pretty extreme to go from free lunch to, to increasing, I mean, presumably, the free lunch kids will stay free, am I right?
Well, we have to continue to advertise and get people to apply for free and reduced lunch. That's number one, very important for us. Obviously, at the beginning of the year, they can do that next year. We do have the free lunch through the remainder of this year, and that's because we applied for that.
Right.
So it wasn't just granted to us, but we, so we were given a waiver is basically what we have this year.
Right. I guess it's just going to, we're going to have to put some communication behind that hard.
Ruben, how many families or students are taking advantage of the food?
So, I, I think percentage-wise, there were a lot of people when we were in the, in person that started to take advantage of the food. Certainly, participation increased during that timeframe. Currently, I would say we had, I mean, Nick, you know the numbers the best from our deliveries. I mean, I think we're at 280 different.
Currently, just for the delivery program, we're at 286 people enrolled. That wasn't as high as our spring. That wasn't as high as our spring numbers. I think at one point we were up to, you know, 400 or more, but that also took into account that we were doing more of an exclusive delivery program. We also offered the pickup program right now. We're, you know, on those same days, Mondays and Thursdays, people can, you know, show up from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. and they can pick up meals. I think we have about, I'd have to double check, but I think we have about 40 or 50 people enrolled in that program. But that is a program that has a greater level of variability just because it's, it's at the nature of who decides to come or not come, whereas the delivery, we're kind of, you know, you sign up and we're delivering it, you decide not to be a part of that program anymore.
So, so it's just over a quarter, roughly?
Yeah, I mean, the, the one thing about this program that is a little different, where, where it's, it might not exactly be apples to apples, is that there's less restrictions on who can, you know, sign up for the program. It's, you don't, you, it's more just like if you're a student in the town versus, you know, being a student enrolled in the district. So there's, there's more ability to, to give out food through this current program due to the, the grant restrictions. So, you know, I, I would think that a large number of, you know, students enrolled in this program are, are our own, but there is a possibility that some of those could be, you know, out of district potentially.
Thank you. So, looking at the overall picture of what we're asking voters to support, I think we need to take a strong look at our warrant articles in aggregate, and if we're going to recommend that we adopt what's stated in Article III, then I think we should not ask for another $100,000 for the special education fund.
John?
Well, yes, I, I guess on the, going back to the question of the $200,000 rescission from the property acquisition fund, if there is a way to have that as a warrant article, that would give voters not only knowledge about what the board is doing, but also, I presume, an option to decide whether they want us to do that. So I, I think that that would be, if it's, if that is feasible, that would certainly be better. And I, you know, Laurel, your last comment about the 100,000 going to the special ed fund, the problem with that is that if we don't put that warrant article there and don't expand that, yet we trim the budget more, then we increase the risk that unanticipated special education funds could, you know, blow our budget. So-
Well, John, I'm saying that if-
It's one or the other.
I'm saying that if we are going to go forward with Article III, which allows us pretty, which allows the board pretty terrific flexibility in expenditures should they need to make them, is there a need to sequester additional funds in this special ed reserve, which already has $400,000?
I, I guess maybe I need to have a better explanation of Article III, because, you know, perhaps I just, you know, the legal language, maybe, I'm not sure I understand it. It sounds to me from the first read like this gives us, this would give us, if passed, which of course, that's an if, would give us the right to retain up to 5% of the district's net assessment, but that's assuming that there is an excess, isn't it? Or if not, how would that work?
Well, first of all, it would be the, if, if passed was one thing you said, right? So that's, it doesn't mean it will pass, the 5% that it will take place. If it does pass, yeah, it's contingent upon what you're able to carry over. And that's for the following year.
And since we're in the process of trying to trim our budget, which, yeah, you know, I think it's a good thing, right? But it means that we're not likely to see such large budget surpluses as we've been accustomed to. I mean, this is not the first year that we've started down this path of trying to trim that. And while we still have a pretty good surplus this year, it's been a COVID year, you know? Lot of extra money coming through the federal government, through the state, from the feds, et cetera.
Nick?
Yeah, Carrie is here. So I can patch her through and she can-
Okay, thank you. Hi, Carrie, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So I'm sorry, I wasn't on earlier, so I'm not sure what I'm, what I'm responding to.
Okay, well, I'm sorry to interrupt your time away from work, first of all.
That's fine.
Just going through the revised documents, the food service fund was increased over $85,000 from what we saw at our Saturday meeting?
No, that's the same figure.
So it changed from, I have, I have a draft number one from December 7?
Are you looking at the default one? It's, it's higher than the default, but it's not, it's not higher than what, than what we had on the Saturday meeting?
This is what happens when you get documents in our before and try to-
So when you see the increase in the food service, there's also an increase in the revenue that the district is contributing to offset that increase. And that, I believe, is around $60,000, and that's due to the increase in the cost for the labor from the food service management company. So they had also increased some of their revenues, so that, that offsets the other, the difference between the two.
Okay, hang on a sec. I have to pull these up. Okay, so this, this is my confusion. So we have estimated revenues and assessments, December 21, draft number two. With food service at 620,000. And then we have estimated revenues and assessments, January 14, budget hearing, and it's reduced to, it's a different number. So I was, maybe I'm confused about what I was looking at. So it, is that the food service budget being decreased?
No, the food service budget is being increased. Let me see if I can, let me see if I can get a look at the documents.
Carrie, while you're looking that up, one question that came up was the $200,000, well, the concept of returning the $200,000 in the property fund. And so we know that the board can simply just do that if it chooses to.
Right.
But there is at least some conversation, no vote or anything has been taken, but some conversation that suggests that maybe, even though that can happen, it would be nice to have it as a warrant article. Are we okay with making it a warrant article anyway? I mean, it would be advisory, I suppose, but-
Well, the indication I got from legal counsel is that-
Yeah.
It's, so, the, the school board are agents to expend from the general fund. So this was a general fund appropriation that was non-lapsing. So the voters have already authorized the school board to expend, that, that's part of the school board's powers to expend from the general fund. So there is no need to send it to the, as a warrant article. I understand you're asking, can we? I, I think it would be, I mean, I suppose I can ask, it just, it was a simple vote of the school board to return the money, is the answer I was given as far as what we needed to do.
So, I mean, so basically, if, I mean, my guess is that it can be done. There's no need to do it.
Yeah, so my question is, why would you want to do it? If, if the intent of the board is to return the money, and we can tell the public that we're going to return the money, and the reason we want to return the money is to offset the taxes, or the tax increase, then why would we want to do that?
At the Saturday meeting, we voted, it was kind of like a contingency vote. We take $800,000 with the understanding that we're going to return the 200,000, so the board is already, more or less-
Ruben, I believe a separate vote was taken.
Was it?
Yeah.
Separate vote was taken for three, okay, to return the money from the land purchase fund, okay? You recommended that we take a separate vote.
Yes, well, I, I want a separate vote. So I, I didn't real, I couldn't remember if we took the separate vote or not.
Yes, we did.
Okay, so we're all good there?
Yes.
Right.
Okay, so I, I pulled up the estimated revenues from 12/7, and I still show 620,952 for food service.
Okay.
So that, I'm not sure what you're looking at, Laurel, but I, the documents I have that were, I have that I provided don't show a difference in the number.
So I'm, I, I was looking at what are new documents that Nick sent us, December 21.
Yeah.
Okay, shows a proposed district assessment of $24,159,248. No, my back was here, sorry.
See, that doesn't look right from what I'm looking at.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at the document, it says Jeffrey Range Property School District, 2021-22, estimated revenues and assessments, 12/21, says 12/21-21, draft number two. Maybe it should be 12/21-20. But anyway, the proposed district assessment is bottom of the page, up all the way down to the bottom. 24,159. But then the next sheet that we're given-
Yeah.
-is for the budget hearing. We dropped down to the bottom line, and it's 24,600,000.
Nick, do you have the ability to pop the, on the screen?
Well, I was just gonna ask Laurel, are you looking at these on your computer?
Yes.
If you want to share your screen, maybe we have a better idea of what you're specifically looking at instead of me trying to-
Okay, fine.
I'll, I'll-
Ask if I could.
Just share it right now and make sure that you're good. So, yeah, if you want to share right now. And while she's pulling that up, I'm certainly happy to review the, you know, the video footage, but I, I have it in my notes as a singular motion that we were going to, that the board was going to ask the superintendent and his team to look at the budget and reduce it by 800,000 with the understanding that the board will have a warrant article to reduce the land purchase fund to $0. So based on the motion that I have written down, and again, if people remember differently, I'm happy to, you know, go back into my, the video. But the, the motion specifically right now does refer to having a warrant article, and it's a contingency of it. So it may be wise if we decide-
Come on.
I think, I think you should go back and check the, check the, recheck the video, because I believe Marcia, excuse me, Marcia, has the vote to make sure that it was on one item at five.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll double check, but I've, I've looked through even a couple pages of notes beyond the original motion.
Okay. So this is one of the sheets Nick sent out this afternoon. Estimated revenues and assessments with today's, I think it's supposed to be today's day, draft number two. If I go down to the bottom line, under the draft number two column, we have this proposed district assessment of $24,159,248. How do I get to the next page? No, I have to, excuse me. Is, Carrie, is it that this-
That's the default one.
This is the default, so I got-
That's the default.
So how, I guess we need to have a label at the top that calls default, so I don't explode my head. So this is the default budget?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's not that some, this is not what we're presenting at the budget hearing, or it is, but it's not what we're presenting as our budget.
As the proposed budget, budget, that's correct. It's just that we have to talk about the default budget, so I showed the difference between the proposed budget and the default budget by having two different documents.
Okay, so the default budget for food service is shows more revenue and less expenses. Is that right?
Well, when you look at the revenues, they should add up to what the expenses are up top.
Okay, fine. So then- So we're at five, I'm sorry, 24,159,248.
Right.
So, Laurel, has your question been answered, or does it change the question now?
I think my question's been answered. I've been educated as to what I was looking at.
Sorry for the confusion.
Basically, 800,000 dropped to the bottom. Is that right?
From what was originally proposed, yes.
From the December 7 draft number one.
Right, should be an $800,000 difference. Yep.
Okay. Very good.
Okay, so-
My, my, so, and then I'll talk about my, my interest in having a warrant, either a warrant article returning the 200,000, or the ability to show the 200,000 in this- Or the ability to show the 200,000 in this document that I'm still sharing. As a. Fund to balance reduced taxes is to. Make. To do what we can to drive down what everyone's going to look at, which is the increase in the tax.
Is to show that we've worked action.
Pardon?
We're showing, demonstrating. The the return, the reduction that we're that actually we've been acting fiscally.
Yes.
Responsible.
So Carrie, my understa, like a warrant article, if we said to return the 200,000. Would that warrant article per how we do business here? Would we say that would we actually talk about the the amount it would decrease taxes?
Well, that's what's unusual, I don't, I'd have to find out because I don't know how we would do that. In theory, I would say yes, but. I didn't even pursue it further when I was told that a warrant article was was unnecessary. So I didn't ask if we could go forward with putting it on anyway. But I did have a question to the DRA about whether or not there was a way to report it. Through the DRA when I send them my estimated revenues. And that's what I was waiting to hear back on. So I think that's the important piece. If if I can have a way to report it with them so we can reflect it. Then I can do that, otherwise it may just end up being a discussion point that we have during the deliberative session, we can talk about it.
It would be great if you can show it as revenue because then you don't have to raise.
Right, right, no, I agree. I'm just waiting to hear back from the DRA whether there's a way I can do that. When I send it to them, so I'm making sure that everything I have ties to what I'm submitting to the DRA.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thanks, Carrie.
Sure.
So do we have any other questions for Carrie while she's here? Or are we ready to go back? And are we gonna do, you know, warrant article, the budget finalization, all this is under action items? But it sounds like we maybe don't have all the information.
I have one last question. So. Where is the number that is on the warrant article? Where in this revenues and appropriations is the 20, we're showing 25 million, I think? There's something different on the warrant article, right?
Well, Nick has the warrant article there, right?
Yeah, I thought it was 27 or 26.
Oh, nice hat, Charlie.
That's why I was laughing earlier.
It's the budget discussion.
Here's the budget number, the 20, the 26 is the. The budget number, the 27 is the default.
Okay, so. So Carrie, that is the general fund plus food service plus other special revenue?
Yes.
Okay.
So the 27 million number that you're seeing at the bottom of that estimated revenues and assessments also includes. The warrant articles, but there's revenue. That's in that number. So that's not what shows. On the proposed operating budget warrant article number two. So warrant article number two is the, when you're looking at the estimated revenues assessments on the top left hand corner. You're adding up those three numbers and that should equal what the proposed operating budget is for warrant article number two.
All right. So are there?
Can you go back to that warrant article, Nick?
Okay, yeah, 26,768,736. That's big fat nut.
So Patty?
Yeah, I get it.
Okay.
I had put these as action items on the agenda, there there isn't necessarily any action per se required. I think the one outstanding issue would be. Potentially, it sounds like a separate motion of the.
200?
Thousand, you know, I'll go, I'll go back and I'll review my my notes. In conjunction with the video from Saturday to ensure that, you know, we have a complete picture of what the exact motion was. Since there's a question on that and then we could, you know, the board can pursue a vote or not, I guess, based on that.
All right. Okay, any of, go on.
Yeah, I think it was more just to try to show, here's, here's the actual draft warrant, is the board okay with, you know, what's there? And then also, the board dictated a certain, you know, monetary cut. You know, charged and just to kind of show that that could also have been made.
Right. Okay, so we need to hear, Carrie needs to hear back. Right, and then see how we address the 200,000, right?
Well, that's, so. That's if you want me to find out about adding it as a warrant article. I don't know that it's. Necessary necessary to hold approving the warrant articles unless you want me to try and find out any language to add it. As a warrant article, otherwise it's just a question of whether or not I can report it as revenues.
Does that make sense?
If you can report it as the revenues. We wouldn't need a warrant article.
Right, so again, I'm thinking maybe we don't have all the information to make this decision right this second.
So I have two questions, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Carrie, what time, what date do we need to have all of this approved?
Yeah, the warrant articles, I don't have the information in front of me. It's on the budget calendar. It's, I know it's sometime in January, let me see if I can pull it up. But I just want to clarify that the 200,000, I'll be able to report it as revenues no matter what. It's just a whether, it's whether or not I can show it on the documents I sent to the DRA for budgeting. So. I just want to make sure that that is understood, that either way, it'll be shown as revenues. When I finalize this fiscal year and it'll go towards. Reducing next year's taxes, I just don't know if I can send it. To the DRA as estimated, as a, as an estimated revenue amount when I submit the numbers to them. That's the only thing I'm unsure of.
We, I think we understand that.
Okay.
What I'm striving for is a way for us to communicate during our budget hearing and deliberative session that we are doing this. Other than just saying that we're going to do it.
Yeah, you want it very clear.
Yeah.
According to our budget calendar, we have our budget hearing on the 12th.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have.
For the 14th.
Right, so after the budget hearing, you will end up. Voting in favor or against the warrant articles. So at that point in time, I would need to have all of the warrant articles finalized. Because then they get posted.
We have according to our schedule until the 25th to post the warrant.
We also have a board meeting on the 4th, I believe.
Yes. That's what I'm thinking, that we can, on the 4th, we should have this information about how we can demonstrate it and best communicate it. Patty?
So and on, I think it's number three where it talks about the 5%. Or currently, we talked about 2.5%. Just because we can doesn't mean we should or could, I mean, or necessarily that we have.
We have to, right?
We have to, we have to retain up to 5%.
We don't, we rarely retain the 2.5, this was.
Right, 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 I guess I'm, I'm just. I'd like better, I'd like to better understand if we, if this is recommended that we do Article 3 or.
Article 3 provides the district more flexibility.
I know, but it's also a lot of money. I mean, potentially.
It's not just backing itself too. It puts a cap at 5%, we don't have to put anything in there.
Right, but is there a cap right now? I mean, right.
The cap right now is 2.5.
Right.
Okay, we don't have 2.5, well.
We do this year.
I know, right, but.
We typically have $250,000 and it's pegged for emergency spending.
Right, but if we, I guess, if that's always been sufficient, why go up?
Because it has to be an emergency use of that 250 that we set aside, right now it's 437. Okay, and basically it says it has to be an unplanned expense and it has to be an emergency. And they're more relaxed with it right now because of COVID. And we didn't know, you know, all of the expenses around COVID. But on a normal year, we would have to go to the DOE and get permission to expend that 250. Whereas with the warrant article 3, it allows us to expend it. For instance, to a public hearing. Which means that all of it, all the decisions are local, it doesn't require a DOE involvement at all. Which is what you want.
Could we, I mean, could we actually have like a warrant article that said if Article 3 passes? Or maybe it's in the voter's guide? If Article 3 passes, the school board will no longer maintain a emergency fund. We would do it through this mechanism. We wouldn't need, if we, if this passed.
Right, so we don't need an emergency contingency.
Right.
Right, I guess that's why, I mean, I feel like we're double, triple, dip, dipping kind of thing and. We just increased it by 100% and then we're still taking for other measures. I don't know.
I would also prefer that if 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 this board moves forward with Article 3, we should not have Article 4.
And your your thought there, Laurel, is that we would, if we had. We would have access to 3 if we needed the money for the emergency, the contingency fund for special education.
Correct.
The only thing I have a concern about that is that. There's something comforting about the fact that this is designated for this purpose and that's. Because because that's happened, because special education situations happen.
They they do happen, they haven't happened in the past, what, eight years? In this district or longer?
Takes one family moving into the district.
And and we have $400,000 scrolled away already.
So.
John?
Again, I just raised the question, if we were to do that, in other words. Include Article number 3, but eliminate Article number 4. Do we have an assurance that we would have that money actually there as a surplus, should it be needed?
Well, that's the board's decision at the end of the year, right?
Well, assuming there is a surplus at the end of the year or a sufficient surplus.
That's what the warrant article says, warrant article says it's funded from surplus. So if you don't have a surplus, it's not going to get funded no matter what.
Right, and that's why he's arguing that we don't get rid of Article 4. Because Article 4 ensures that there will be that money for special ed.
It does not, it does not. Again, it says it's funded from surplus at the end of the year, if you don't have the surplus, you can't fund that article. You can't fund Article 5 either.
Right, got it, okay.
Well, that actually answers John's question.
Yes.
Is that if there's, I don't think John was asking for this particular year necessarily. But for in the future, other years, if down the road, two years from now, there's not a surplus. Then the Article 3. Ends up not being of a whole lot of value. Whereas you would still have the 100,000 that's in, in theory, as long as we never, we didn't use it in the special ed fund. Is that kind of what you were saying, John?
Yes.
But but to counter that, Ruben, you will always have a surplus in the amount of the, that's in the reserve fund, the reserve fund. Okay? You will always have that surplus because you can't spend from it unless you have a public hearing.
Right.
Okay, so the point is, is that you have to make a conscious attempt and you have to have the public involved. In terms of spending any of that money. So at the end of the year, if you haven't spent it, it's there as a surplus. The thing that it does allow you to do is it does allow you, if you. End up with no surplus at all and you need to spend money for something, you can use that fund to do it. I mean, it's it's a, it's a reserve just like the 2.5% is, it allows us to have 5%, which is an increased amount. If the board wants to do it. And it also allows us to expend it with public input, a public hearing. So from my perspective, it puts all the control locally. Whether we do something or don't do it, all right, is a board decision. Whether you're doing 2.5 or whether you're doing 5%, makes no difference. The board still has to put the money in or take the money out.
So a question for Ruben. Did you understand what Charlie just said to the degree that you would? You know, agree with that?
What he said is true. I understand how it operates, I understand how it works. But what I think that you were, you were saying, just for, you know, as right now, just discussion purposes. Is that, well, to, in this, the board, first of all, doesn't have to at any point in time. Because a board four years from now might say, we're not gonna, we have, let's say we have an $800,000 surplus. We have the ability to retain it all perhaps. But we're not interested in doing so, and they have the right to do so, not retain any of it. But. What you have with the. Special ed contingency fund is that money's there. You'd have to, you know, go through a process to return that money back to taxpayers, that money would would be there. Whereas the 5% of the other one, to your, to your point. If last year, we didn't have a surplus and we had the ability to put 5% back in or whatever. Well, we wouldn't do it because if there was no, there would, was not a surplus. And then this year, let's say we didn't have the special education contingency fund. Because we were relying upon the ability to use the 5% if we wanted to. We had intentions to do that, we just didn't happen to have a surplus that was big enough to do so. And then we ran into problems, then that 5% doesn't do anything for you. You know, I'm talking about ifs.
Yes.
I think that, first of all, I think Article 3 is a fantastic article. It gives the board flexibility, I think the board should always have flexibility. I think that's what you want within your policies, I think that's what you want within, you know, negotiations and contracts. And certainly in this article, the more flexibility you have to make the decisions that you need to make, the better. The more you handcuff yourself, the more difficult it becomes. The more you handcuff yourself, the more difficult it becomes. You know, I, I, and I, you know, I certainly advocate for money being put into the Special Edu- Education Contingency Fund, but I see the point that is also stated that there's a good chance with the history that we've had, that we'll have surpluses, that the board will be able to make a decision between 0 and 5% retainage for the next year. And that retainage, what's nice about Article III is that retainage allows you to use it more freely than what the retainage is that we currently do now. It's a different type of allowability and what the money is used for. So, in theory, it could be used at 5% or some, you know, whatever was retained with this, what's in this article, with RSA 198.4B. It could be, the use of it is broadened and the ease of using it is there. So, you know, it, it depends whether you think you're going to have a surplus or not.
Patty?
So, I appreciate too that, what you said, someone said it was 400,000 in the Special Education Contingency Fund now. So we have a hefty balance in there right now. Is there any reason why we wouldn't say cut that appropriation? I know it says up to 100,000, but what if it was up to 50,000 or, or cap it at 25,000? I guess the other piece that I, maybe I misunderstanding about this, but if we use the 5%, proportion of the 5% for, say, special education, we'd have to have a public hearing about that. And I guess I'm not comfortable with that. I guess, I mean, in terms of like specifics of use of monies and confidentiality and all kinds of things, I'm not sure for a public hearing to weigh whether or not we expend money towards special ed in this way. But that's what a deliberative session feels like. I don't know. I don't, am I wrong? Am I wrong about that?
No matter what we have to, if we expend money from the special ed fund, we have to do it in a board meeting.
But it's not a hearing. I mean, it's not going to, it's not going to feel like, you know, Jen Horn's going up to advocate. I mean, it would be more of a discussion than a showing artifacts and making, I guess, the same kind of pitch, I guess. I don't know. Anyway, those are just thoughts. Lots of thoughts, new information.
I would like to clarify a layer of your concerns, because a public hearing is nothing more than a board meeting with public input. And basically what it says is it says people have the right to ask questions. And we have the right to answer or not answer, depending on confidentiality. So, I mean, there's, there's nothing, there's stuff that we can't even know.
No, no, that's why I'm thinking, I mean, I guess the, it's the word, the, public hearing sounds so scary.
You're not gun shy, are you?
Are you kidding me? I'm starting to get Teflon. Teflon right here.
Okay, so we've been talking about this for a really long time now.
Okay.
What are we going to do? Sorry, Laurel.
The, the 350,000 for the Building Maintenance Reserve Trust Fund earmarked for paving. Ruben, are we going to be able to get an RF, RFQ out, say, by January 15?
Yeah, so John, I think you had a meeting today and got some sample documents. And so John had shared those with me, maybe, I don't know, four hours ago. So, we'll continue to move on them. Had I, had we received those sooner, we would have, you know, definitely moved a little bit sooner. So we want to get moving on those. Give up the opportunity to get our areas paved, if possible. Especially if it's not as much as we had originally thought all these years.
My, so, my concern is that this is when contractors are bidding and scheduling out their summer. So if we don't do it now, we're not, it's not going to happen next summer, so why ask for the money? So, it just really has to be a...
Yeah, no, I have full, I have full confidence that John will move forward quickly if, and, and find the necessary help if there are some concerns or questions that we have. But we talked about it today briefly and he gave me the documents and, and so we'll go from there.
So you're saying rescind that suggested warrant article? Or are you saying use the building contingency money for something else, Laurel?
I think she's saying we, if we're going to put it on the warrant, we had better plan to get the work done.
Have our ducks in a row.
Right, like, have three, at least three bids and know we've got the right contractor and we're going to do it.
Okay.
And is it your intent to also get pricing for JGS?
Yes.
We have 290,000 in the Building Maintenance Reserve Trust Fund and another, like, 150 or 60 left in the special warrant for parking lots?
I don't know the exact amount, but it would be around, what, between 140 and 180, yeah.
I mean, like, I just want to be sure that if we're going to ask for the money, we're going to effectively, efficiently do the work in a timely fashion.
People see their money in action.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not let the funds grow and we don't do stuff.
Well, I guess it, you know, it's up to us, especially on the Facilities Committee, to stay involved with that process. And it's a hard time of year, right? Talk about January 15th. Between now and January 1st, we're getting together with families of things and that includes John, no doubt.
No doubt.
But...
A lot less of an issue. It's a lot, it seems like it's a smaller, I don't want to say smaller. Yeah, I will. A, a, a less complicated project than what we've been talking at, in the Facilities Committee for like, like, three years. So hopefully, that will make it easier. Hopefully.
So...
Thanks for focusing our attention.
So, warrant articles. Are we letting it sit for now?
I have a question. Sorry.
Yes.
If, if we're going to propose warrant Article III, are we going to, it, it's a different RSA that allows for the emergency fund, right?
Yes.
Is it our intent to not do that anymore?
The 2.5?
Right.
Like we did this year? I, that's my understanding is it's instead of...
Well, it doesn't read that way. Do we have the ability to do both? I want to make sure that...
First, first, we have to, the legislative body has to approve it. Okay? Then we can enter into a discussion as to what we're going to do with it. Because I think it's premature right now to say whether we're going to use two or not. I think that's a board decision. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to keep both. I mean, what's the sense?
Right. I agree. Okay.
If you've got one bank that's right next door and you can get money out of it, just by driving over, and you've got another bank that's in California and you have to send something through snail mail, why would you bother keeping an account in California?
I get it. So, at some point, the board must have adopted the other RSA. Or the voters did.
The voters did.
So, that needs to rescind that. Is that what you're saying?
I don't know. Do we ask them to?
Oh, go ahead.
That's what I said. If this article passes, then that.
Can I, can I add something?
Sure, Carrie.
Okay. So, my understanding is this warrant article is to adopt the revisions, that it's the same RSA, it's just revisions to the RSA. So we're either retaining 2.5% or 5%.
That would make sense.
And the language in that warrant article was designed so that if it failed, we didn't lose the 2.5%.
That, thank you.
That was excellent clarification.
And quick, really quick. That was great.
Thank you, Carrie.
Okay. So, what are we doing? Are we going to bring this up on the 4th again? Or are we just going with what we have? John, I saw you had your hand up.
Oh, I was going to make a motion to adopt the warrant articles as presented.
You need to do it, you have to do that whole package or article by article?
Article by article. Wouldn't you, you'd have to vote seven to whatever.
Well, I think Article II waiting on curating the audit footage as...
It won't impact the article. It would impact the tax rate.
Correct.
And also about how we're going to talk about it or demonstrate it.
Okay.
Communicate it.
Thank you for that correction.
But it doesn't change warrant articles. So back to warrant articles.
Could you pull them up, Nick?
John, John made a motion.
Yes. And it was as accepted and then somewhat, then it was said, well, do we have to do each article? We do do each article, but we do that after the budget hearing, right?
If there are any, yeah. To, to talk about who, any changes that would take place following that hearing and also to vote so that we actually have official numbers in there. Like, for instance, Article III would say 700 or 150.
Right. Not XXX.
You know, that's, yeah.
Yeah. But right now, we're just trying to, this motion is about, this is what we're going to present.
For, for the budget hearing, yes.
Right. Second. You're going to second it? Okay, Patty. John and Patty have made a motion.
So, I have a discussion.
Yeah.
For Article IV, if we're going to leave Article III in there, then from Article IV, I would go along with Patty and change appropriations from 100,000 to 25,000 because you've already got 400,000 in there.
Okay.
I'm fine with that amendment.
I was going to suggest an amendment to zero, but I'm fine with 25,000.
Okay, so we've amended the motion. Is there more discussion on the amendment? I'm not seeing any hands, so I'm going to go to a roll call vote. Charlie?
Would you check to Article IV? Aye.
Thank you. Heidi?
Aye.
Thank you. John?
Yes.
Thank you. Laurel?
Yes.
Thank you. Patty?
Aye.
Thank you. I say aye as well. And that passes 600. This is what we're presenting with the amendment. Okay. Policies. Now, Alicia's usually the person who talks to us about this, but she's not here.
No, these were the policies that were presented last time. Not a lot of conversation about it. They're more or less the same as the policies that were there before with an addition of...
The language.
Just highlighting part of what's, yeah, just talking about the fact that we will do our best to make sure that people who need other means to understand, you know, I believe it's a...
Language.
I move we accept the policies for the second reading as presented.
Yeah.
J, N, I, and JIA.
Okay, thank you, Laurel, and thank you, Heidi. Any discussion? Not seeing any hands, going to the roll call vote. Patty?
Aye.
Thank you, Laurel.
Aye.
Thank you, John.
Yes.
Thank you. Heidi?
Aye.
Thank you, Charlie.
Aye.
Thank you. I say aye as well. That passes 600. Committee updates. So, first up is the Education Committee. So, I know, Charlie, I didn't send you the email.
What?
Well, I always ask you to do the update. And you just do a quick one.
A quick one was that we got a great update from David and Heather and Dana around the major areas that they're going to propose changes to in the area of ELO and the area of the strategic design, Ovin Ford and the curriculum director. And the changes to the graduation requirements. And we did a tremendous amount of work. And it really turned out to, I'm sorry, I was impressed. So, I think they did a good job and I think it will be coming forward to the board.
And I want to check with you, Nick. The PowerPoint, you know, the slideshow that they had, is that going to be posted under the Education Committee or is it?
I don't currently have that presentation. I certainly could post it somewhere. I do have a video. I haven't had the opportunity to appropriately process that so that it can be uploaded. Hopefully, you know, if I have a spare moment, I'll be able to get to it this week or next week. Just the short weeks, not 100% certain.
Right, and maybe even, you know, David might have a pared down, I don't know. But I just thought that might be something, you know, worth having posted so people can see kind of the, the direction and what it looks like this, the, the strategic design looks like as we go forward in, in actual concrete things. All right, any questions for the Education Committee? I think, yes, Heidi?
Oh, I don't have a question, just a comment. I was really, again, also very impressed at just the incredible productivity of that team. And I really enjoyed it and it's exciting. And I think they're, you know, gave us just some really good tangible examples of what, you know, what changes will actually be taking place. And, and I think it's all really good news. And a thank you to that team who worked so hard to put that presentation together and that was just great.
Thanks. Thanks very much. Okay. Yes. Um, okay, how about Facilities?
Facilities Committee did meet today. And we discussed what we talked about earlier with parking lots. We also discussed the progress that the architect is making and we hope to receive some deliverables from them the first week in January, specifically masonry facade assessment and floor plans. They are slated to begin a slow of work in January and Leslie Ruben's executive assistant is working with them to try to coordinate that should any meetings need to take place. Otherwise, the anticipated work is proceeding at pace and our facilities manager, I think, is doing a terrific job organizing his staff and making them, enabling them to be as efficient as they can be. And he is going to be turning his attention to how to manage the, I'll say, the building and buildings and grounds now that I think he has his custodial staff all squared away.
Great. Good. Any questions for Facilities? Comments? John? Can't hear you, John. Can't hear you. Nothing. We got nothing. There we go.
I was wrestling some papers before and muted again. Okay, sorry. So, Todd Crotto? So Todd Crotto, Crotto from the Town of Jaffrey joined us this morning. And it was very helpful in talking about the parking lot reclamation. But he also, or we took advantage of the opportunity, it was Laurel who raised the question of the Safe Streets Initiative. And, you know, the town did do some work in front of Jaffrey Grade School. And we'll be paving, I believe, this summer. So this will be an opportunity for us to do something. We're not exactly sure what, but it's another thing that's on the agenda to be decided between now and the summer.
All right. Great. It's nice that we're working with the town.
It is. A pleasure.
All right. We're up to public comments again. So Nick?
Yes, the same video was before. I want to get a public comment. If you can raise your hand in that feature that you get bottom of your screen, first last name in town residence, please.
Anything?
Nothing.
Okay. All right. Well, let us know for the next minute or so you get something. Board matters, anything? Okay, nothing there either. Future items, we have still the update on technology. I know that Ruben periodically, you've been just giving us any kind of update you have.
We're meeting in early January with the Atom Group to go over their findings.
Excellent. Great. Okay. And then the graduation requirements. I mean, that was touched on in your report and that was all part of the presentation to the Education Committee too. At some point, we'll have that and more. Okay.
Yeah, well, it will have to come to the board for any type of approval.
Right. Right. Okay.
Not just the graduation requirements. I was, I should have probably put this down in there, but also possible course additions.
Courses, yeah. Yeah. All right. Wonderful. That's us done unless someone has something else. So I need a motion.
I make a motion. We adjourn.
Lovely. Thank you. And can I have a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Heidi. And with that, we're adjourned.
Merry Christmas. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Holidays, everyone. Thank you so much.
See you in 2021.